I have got five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Um, roll call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewitt, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, uh, town clerk Katie Dandiran, and town manager Jesse Dunbar. Adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change? Okay, first thing we have is a public hearing. Uh, we have a public hearing, uh, entitled Tremont Community Building. And like to open up the public hearing at five oh one. Jesse, do you wanna, um, kinda give us a outline of how we've gotten here? I think everybody knows, but just so.
Yep. So, um, it was in early fall, um, the slot board had an agenda item, um, to discuss the Tremont Community Building and whether or not the town and the school were interested in discussing transferring ownership of the building to the school. Um, the school, several school board members attended that meeting and then I attended, um, uh, the November school board meeting and we talked about it, um, again in the school board. Um, in general, both boards committees seem open to discussing the transfer of, um, ownership. Um, the school was gonna look into what costs, um, it would incur by taking on the ownership of the building. Um, and we figured the next step was to try and get public input, um, as to whether or not the public was opposed to or in favor of a change of ownership. Um, so we scheduled this public hearing. Um, and moving forward, based on feedback, um, you can either schedule another one in the future, you could discuss putting in on town meeting warrants, um, getting rid of the idea entirely or whatever direction you think you wanna proceed.
First, let's say, is there any public comment? Going once? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close, um, the public hearing at, uh, five oh three. Now, do you want us to decide after that, Jesse, on whether we would like to, what we would like to do next?
Yeah, if you wanna keep them in discussion or...
I would love to hear some public input about it. That was, uh, um, before we did anything. I mean, I know we've heard from both sides of it how, why it would make sense for, for both parties in both different directions, but, um, kinda would like to hear.
I think we've been kinda waiting for input from the schools, see how interested they are, if I'm not mistaken. And that's kinda where I remembered it, remembered it was that they're gonna kinda look in, into whether it was going to have more liability for the school, I guess, or more financial liability or burden.
I think the school is, is interested, but I think we felt like we had to wait for this public hearing.
Public input, yeah.
Into it too much for this stuff as well.
So, I think I was the one that raised it before us. I think it's a good idea for the school owners tied to their building. And the only thing the town will use is it for is community events and the school's willing to be, have that allowed. I don't see this much of a change, except you get more control over the buildings you're using, you know?
Yes, Roger.
Um, yeah, I think one of the things we had talked about was just what you said, um, was that if we do any planning or any remodeling in there, having the ability to include that in the planning process and a sort of a, a consistent whole package would be helpful.
And we just wanna make sure that, I know, we all know, but, um, that every, all the taxpayers know that they'll still be able to use, um, that building like they always have. Um, the only difference would just be, um, you know, who owns it, basically, I guess.
Would you still get the key, would you get the keys from the school? If the school decided to take it, then we would...
We'd have to figure out, they would be, we'd have to have like a memorandum of understanding.
Something, yeah.
It'd have to be in a way, but in the other schools, like the other schools which are, you know, the building is owned totally by the or managed wholly by the district, it's similar. They have basketball, they have, you know, it works through a similar process, but you then you, you make that arrangement with the principal of the school rather than through the town.
Uh, and I'd just add that the school committee was, um, very adamant at their meeting that they felt the community's use of the building was a vital part of the community and that they wanted to maintain that should they take over the ownership of the building.
Yeah, I know there's been even like maintenance issues or capital improvement issues and it, it wastes a lot of time going back and forth on some of that. And I mean, the school's part of the town anyway. I mean, it's not like we're giving it to a foreign country. So, I mean, it just seems so it'd be better for you to be able to make decisions on it without having to have us say yes every time.
Does that have to go to town meeting?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, would you like to discuss further, maybe if the school dis- discussed this further and then we could make sure that we, um, had like, um, some sort of a written memorandum of understanding ahead of time, so that everyone would feel comfortable and know that they can still use it as they, they would've. We could tackle that part of you guys would, you know, whatever you need to do on your, on your behalf.
I would say however it went on to the, however it went on to the warrant, we would definitely want the community to understand that they would still be able to access the building.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I thi- I think that's the only concern we have, as long as that's assured.
Do we have enough time to make this happen in May?
So, it depends on how you wanna have it on your, um, town warrant as a question, a voting question through a ballot or as an open town article question. Um, if you're looking at town ballot to go along with municipal officers, uh, you do need to make that decision before the end of this month, so ballots can get printed.
And so it can be an open discussion?
Yeah.
The only thing is, I always felt that when you put things on a ballot, it seems like you get more, um, more input than you do if it's just an open discussion sometime. I mean, some town meetings, we have a really good turnout, sometimes it's only thirty people, so, um, yeah, I, it's always hard to feel like you're making that decision on thirty people, but...
Yeah, that's a good point. More people come to vote for vacant spots and if that's so.
Do, do we have enough time so the school board could have a meeting and really make sure that that's really what they wanna do and get it on the warrant?
Pretty tight. Um, I'm not sure there's necessarily any reason to push it onto the warrant. Um, I think if the school and the town both wanna proceed with looking into it and drafting some paperwork, um, there's no reason that you could wait until the November or, or even when it...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's right, we could use November.
We could use November.
Yeah, that's right.
No pressing.
Okay.
It's not going anywhere.
Yep. I was thinking we'd have to wait a little year.
That's what I was thinking too, that's why I was pushing a little bit, but I forget November can be a thing also, okay.
All right, so do you need a motion on that, Jesse?
Can I just say one?
Oh, yes.
I think because of the remodeling project that, that the school's undertaking, probably would be good to get it done if this is the direction we're going, you know, that it'd be good to get a definitive answer on it, you know, on, on the sooner side of things because it makes that timing process easier. Unfortunately, our meeting's tomorrow, so there's not...
Not enough time. Pressing my luck. But no, would November be?
I mean, I think that would be fine. I don't think we're gonna be tearing out any walls because as long as it was, you know, we could sort of proceed in that direction of yes.
With that expectation.
Okay.
Okay, you say no motion, Jesse? You're good. Okay. All right, um, next we have approval of minutes. We have the minutes from Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-first, twenty twenty-third.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have approval of warrants. Short, what's this time, Jesse? Warrant eighty-two for eleven thousand six hundred sixty dollars and sixty-seven cents. Eighty-three for seventy thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Eighty-four for twelve thousand five hundred twenty dollars and twenty-one cents, and warrant eighty-five for eleven thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
I make a motion to approve warrants eighty-two through eighty-five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants eighty-two through eighty-five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have regular business. The first thing we have is Versant Power, discussion of their easement. We have talked about this extensively before and I see we have Versant here with us to explain anything. Would you guys like to start? Is there anything you wanna, um, to start with, or do you wanna sort of look it over and discuss something?
Look it over. Uh, I've got, um, Kevin Weber with me, he's the manager of real estate. Kim Miller, who's sort of like the co-engineer.
Okay.
He did a design on that.
Yep.
Um, the only, I, I don't know if, um, what we saw the last time showed all the facilities on the back, the back part of the lot.
Yep.
He designed it to come, um, so that we weren't taking out so much of the lot now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was...
The main, the main issue.
Mm-hmm.
And the only other thing to make sure of the, um, a couple of things, um, we don't have any problem moving the granite. We just need to be told where it's gonna go.
Yep.
And what we plan to do first thing is to, I think, gravel pad out of the area that you see this, kind of a circle area.
Mm-hmm.
Not the circle, but the, um, the landfill, but the, I think it's labeled.
Says mobile sub, move, yeah.
Yeah, well, the, no, it's even bigger.
The lower pick-up.
Oh, okay, I gotcha, yep.
The lower school. Kind of improve the whole area, kind of let the little ground was so it could be used.
Mm-hmm.
Finding folks for the park and stuff if you were to, to record. So it would be that, actually, it's not labeled, but the, that almost, uh, U shape.
Yes.
Um, that goes pretty little, just offset from the background being, then comes down in curves and then so that whole area we planned to gravel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, we don't have, um, any immediate use for that area, but we just, if we're gonna go in there, we, we just do it all and give it to the point where, um, especially imagine maybe we'll use the area for that.
Are you gonna leave the, some tree buffer between the houses in that back corner there?
Um...
To the south, I guess.
We don't plan to cut any trees, um, beyond the, that, the fill area.
All right.
Except for, um, going out that right away.
Yep.
We'll, we'll have to clear most of that.
Yep.
Do you have any existing, run it up there?
And maybe, I know we had a question before, um, was the, maybe the, you're the right man to ask then. Um, with our, our lines running in and out, I know that was one thing someone could brought up, maybe it was myself, but, um, why couldn't we run all the ins and outs on that same, same piece? I know there was a...
The line is today?
Uh, no, on the, the one that's, um, there's...
Oh, the old thing, the finger?
Yes, the one that is marked lunch on it. It's a lunch property, is what it used to be.
So, it's, it's entirely possible that it could, we're just trying to make this as practical as we can.
Okay.
So there's existing line into your solar service.
Mm-hmm.
On that upper road.
Yep.
So it seemed natural for us to put wires above that on new poles, follow that same path as part of what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's the higher voltage line heated. Because the, both the pad mounted substation and the mobile substation site are linear. You've got the higher voltage on one end and the lower voltage on the other.
Mm-hmm.
So it makes it, this lot is particularly good for doing that because you can come up out of the slot. If we have to double around and come back out the slot for all the V plus the line going out, we'd have to reconfigure again and figure out how to do that.
Yep.
Now, we could put a single line with two wires sets.
Okay.
Within that finger coming out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we're trying to create as much separation.
Yep.
From the circuit going back out and up and out around of one on two.
Mm-hmm.
In Open Swans Island, and the circuit that comes out and goes directly to town.
Yep.
The village, they have two separate sets of small transformers out here on the poles today. So it lends itself, since that slot was wide enough to put them separate.
Mm-hmm.
It gives it that added reliability, I guess you'd say. Get one line doesn't affect the other as much.
Safety as well.
And it's safer work.
Yep.
No, I think we already got that one. I, I understand, but I mean, it's already there. You could come up the other way. Uh, I, I think the redesign works for me. I appreciate it.
The only thing that I see, I wanna make sure that we all, we've planned for, uh, potentially a fire department to be located down here. Fire Department garage. Yep. And we just wanna make sure that we leave enough room for that, um, you know, that we're, we're giving ourselves plenty of buffer room there. Um, that's the only, the only concern that I have with it, any of it. Um, and nothing, are you, gonna say? Cause we were, we were wondering if we'd have more room here to be able to move, but it doesn't look like we're gonna have any more room to move, so I think we're, we're stuck with what we had.
Yeah.
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 Jesse, didn't you say, did, did you take some measurements and see if the easement was gonna affect that building?
Yes. Yep, um, it looks, uh, I think we originally way back and talked about a potential fire station building being right in the cleared area that's already cleared for the ice skating rink. Um, we could probably need to move it back towards the down office driveway, clear some of those trees, um, to get it safely, you know, away from any of this easement, um, but there appears to be room to do that. Depends on what you end up with for a plan of building size and what you want for parking, um, but we did, I measured the, I believe the six day draft that we've done a year and a half ago. Um, here's a hundred and forty or something like that by fifty or something like that.
And even that easement can be part of the parking lot area of what we wanna do.
Yeah, you're not, you're not planning on putting a fence exactly around the orange, yeah. I don't see that being an issue then.
There's enough to be...
That's a good question asked. Our expectation is we're gonna build this as a pad mounted substation, no fence.
Yeah.
It's a green box on a concrete pad.
Yeah, that's what we thought originally, that's what we...
Just got some of the similar equipment that's out on the street side today.
Yep.
Move it around it.
Mm-hmm.
To get away from the traffic, the green box, you can get a bigger one, the can of transformers up on the pole. Like the ones across from the store, the other side, that's the biggest, that style transformer company.
And those are gonna go away if you do this project too.
They've gotten a little warm over the years, I know that.
And the, even the grade of the pad mounted transformers is better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes you, uh, it's, you're probably just there to say that it's not the highest class like the monsters, but compared to the, everything transformers is, have been working since eighty-seven.
Yeah.
It's good, it's time to do something a little better.
And the gray shaded box on there, just in case you were wondering, um, he said this just indicated gravel drive access to that pad.
Okay. Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of this deal was to tie in the, do something with the solar?
Yeah, well, if we expand the solar, it's gonna make that a lot easier with that, that amount of transformer there too. That's been, there's been some issues trying to make that
Yeah.
work with what's there, I guess. There's been some challenges, this will resolve those.
The limit, the transformers, they're on the poles, they're only so big.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's, I think that's what got a lot of this moving. But anyway, it'll, it'll solve that problem too, so.
I think it looks good. I think it looks a lot better than the first time. The only thing, I just would like to make sure, um, I would like to have, um, Jesse take and do a layout or a walkthrough, you know, just to be sure that you lay out what, what, you know, a rough idea of what we're proposing, um, find out from Keith or Ethan, however much room you need in front of that to be able to pull out, you know, just in front, just to be sure that we're covering all of our bases before we, I mean, this, yeah, this looks good. I think it looks, don't get me wrong. I just wanna be sure we've covered everything on our side and then, um, as long as we have, then I think it's great. I just...
Well, the, the only part of that would be this, I don't know, northwest part of the easement. And, I mean, I, I guess the biggest issue would be if you planned on eventually fencing that, you know, that northwest corner of it at some point. That's, you know, around what Jamie's mentioning and I'm betting you, you wouldn't put a fence around that section anyway.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I can see it up higher, but I wouldn't...
You're saying, do you know where the existing line goes in?
Yes, it'd be the corner down here where there's, right now it's called the Town of Tremont right away, that, where the driveway that runs up through, uh, up into there, just that bottom corner that's right on the edge of that's what I think go down here.
Yeah. We can envision a practical reason why you'd want to do that?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, that's the only access. If the fire department was down there, they could pull a truck out and turn around or back in, and if there's no fence there, it's not an issue.
Um, didn't, um, didn't you say, Jesse, that you thought that the configuration of building had changed, so it was gonna face the, face the road and still be impertinently up to it?
No, and we'd be perfect if, well, if you think so.
Yeah.
The one that, yeah, the, the design that we looked at at first, um, everything, I just wanna be sure there's enough room. Obviously, we've said, I know we've gone over this, that, um, the easement won't affect us being able to pull trucks underneath it, and wash trucks and everything else. I just wanna make sure that there, um, that we are, you know, crossing all of our T's, dotting all of our I's. Make sure there's enough room in there to be able to pull them out in front. Um, I'd like to physically stake it out and, or I know it's not your job, Jesse. You or, or whoever you would like to delegate it to, but just be able to, yeah, uh, you have someone sitting behind you there, then, Roger. No, 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 I was looking at you, Roger. That's just, if we only knew a surveyor or something around, it could help, lay that out would be fine.
So, you, so you would be using the existing gravel drive as access, ac- access to the right?
Well, I think what I had kind of envisioned before would be between that telephone pole you have marked right there and that driveway, um, that would just be a big wide driveway, you know, so it would be just a wide berth to go up in and, um, and then you'd be able to drive her back in. I mean, the front of the building, um, just looking at it roughly here would be about where your table of contents is, where your L five is right there. That would be the front of the building.
Yep.
Um, so that would give you plenty of room to be able to pull out. I just wanna make sure that we've measured that and marked it.
You need to go past our pole on the way up to the street, is what you're saying. You're gonna turn and come up to the street, past the...
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So it is important to consider, there is intended to be anchors on that pole because the line changes direction.
Okay, yep, I never thought of that.
Yep.
Yeah, but those, that's not that far from the pole. I mean, you've probably done...
It's twenty feet, isn't it?
Ten feet, so...
I think, well, twenty feet is probably what we'd be going there, probably a few less.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it may be over to the, the actual blue line, the anchor.
Yes, that's forty foot, yep, you're right.
Yeah, but you, yeah, but you could stick a bollard in there, mark it well.
And that's the stuff I just wanna be sure. If we just mark it out, then if we say, hey, can you move this over five feet, you know, I know it's, it's not a huge difference, but just to make sure that we've, we've checked everything through.
So we don't mind, um, going off with that pole. We tried, we tried to bring it, um,
Okay.
So I, we can, we'd have to change the configuration of the easement.
Yep.
But...
I see what you mean, yeah.
We could work with it, you know?
Okay.
And I'd be happy to come and meet with Jesse too and, you know, do some, I try to, so.
Yep. No, is he, oh, perfect, yeah. Well, he didn't tell us that.
It's been a while.
So, that follow from what Dave said, we would, we plotted it all in the middle of the easement on that piece.
Yep.
Cause we're normally trying to keep from getting near hedges where there'll be trees and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's not likely if we filed the north edge of the easement, that you're gonna put trees where you put the fire pit.
No, you're safe on that one, I think.
Right, right.
So we would, we didn't have to reconfigure it.
So it's compatible.
Okay. Okay.
Now, just so we know, just in case there was an issue, did, while you're here, um, did you say you could stack lines or however you wanna put it? You could put everything on that finger if we absolutely had to, just so we know that's an option.
Yeah.
Um, if we, I know it's not optimal, but if we had to, we could do it.
Well, did we, are, are you saying all, there's three lines?
Yep.
So you're saying put all three lines on that finger?
On that finger if we had to.
Or say all three?
Yes, that's what I meant, yep.
That would require a redesign.
Oh, okay.
And, and, and also, um, sacrificing reliability, actually quite a bit, actually.
Okay, that's what I was wanting.
All the actors in one basket.
Okay.
You're probably gonna need tall poles too, I would guess.
Oh, yeah, tall poles.
Keeping the two distribution lines coming out on that fifty foot strip is probably more doable than putting all three down the same.
Okay.
That higher voltage coming in.
It's not, it's not as, you're not gonna get as good a benefit from this if you do that.
Yeah, okay.
Certainly it's possible.
Yeah, but you, you wanna try to make this... All right.
Definitely looks a lot better than last time.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's good. I appreciate the redesign.
Yeah.
Let's measure stuff out.
Yeah.
Good enough?
Just in general, I'd like to thank you guys just for considering it. I think it'll be a good fit for the town to get it upgraded and certainly we're interested to do that, so.
No, thank you for taking the time to try to, I know he's been down, spent a lot of time trying to make everything fit, you know, make everything work.
The man for the job, that's why I put him on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, we would probably do our best to get what we've done so we can come to the next meeting.
Yep.
Um, if you think that that's the only thing holding things up, um, where can I use the, who are we for that can handle the price?
Yeah, we have a meeting every Monday of this month, uh, for budget season, so we're, um, we'll be, we can, as soon as, as soon as Jesse has a chance in his free time to go out and stake all this out, we'll make sure that, you know, as soon as we get our measurements, I can go and help if we need to stake it out and, um, just to be sure we, we have enough room and then we'll put it on the agenda. That's the way I care.
Yeah, just to build on that. Sooner we can get something done, not the pressure here, but if something happens to these thing, these...
Existing transformers?
Yeah.
Yeah, the step downs, I agree. It'd be nice to have a spot.
We could dig up some more transformers.
Yeah, I know. I know, I spoke to him before, I said, I've seen those growing up here. I've seen those on fire a few times before. I think they're a... I know, I spoke to him before, I said, I've seen those growing up here, I've seen those on fire a few times before, I think they're a little overloaded.
Yeah, if you get something in place ready.
See, what we would do immediately is build a facility so it would accept the portables up, unnecessary with the transformer in it.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
That allows us to cover the base if something happens, so we'll step down.
Yep.
And the transformers are ordered.
Perfect.
Delivery of it looks like.
Sometime next year.
Yeah, you're lucky it's sometime next year, right?
Yes, transformers have been like one of the most difficult, long lead situations we've had.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that transformer is, you know, more or less this time of year.
Yep.
Next year, so we'll just put it in spring.
Mm-hmm.
That's our goal. Hopefully, that just, it'll come through.
Yep. Anything else you guys have for us? Okay, no, again, thank you, thank you for taking the time to, uh. All right, next, we have, um, the regular business cemetery trust fund. Jesse?
Yes, so, the, um, semi, cemetery trust fund, um, was set up years and years ago, um, and through the years, the town's been unable to locate the origin of it. Um, but it's known that the principal balance must remain invested, and the interest from it can be used for cemetery maintenance, um, so the interest from it goes into our revenues and just goes towards the cost of public works, maintaining, um, the cemeteries. Currently, that generates around seventeen hundred dollars a year in interest, um, the balance of the cemetery trust fund is rated around a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, and last month, when I was doing the financial reports, um, and looking at it, it occurred to me that it could be generating substantially more interest if it was in a C D, um, similar to the one that we, um, put the surplus, some of our surplus money in. Um, so I did reach out to, um, the branch manager at Farber Bank and Trust in Southwest about this, um, she said we could do it in a thirteen-month C D at a rate of three point seven five, uh, and it should generate approximately, um, she updated me today, seven thousand and eight dollars, uh, in a thirteen-month period.
Good.
Um, so, and it can also be set up as a, um, that the C D just continually reinvests at the thirteen-month mark, and it'll transfer the interest into our operating account at that time.
Yeah, so, so seven thousand, so it's seventeen hundred?
That's crazy.
Yeah.
That's a no brainer.
Yeah.
No brainer, yeah.
I, I authorize the town treasurer to reinvest the cemetery trust fund balance into a thirteen-month certificate of deposit with By Harbor Bank and Trust with at least a three point seven five interest rate.
Second. Then moved in second to authorize the town treasurer to reinvest the cemetery trust fund balance in a thirteen-month certificate of deposit with By Harbor Bank and Trust with at least a three point seven five, uh, percent interest rate. Any discussion?
If you're gonna have it roll over each year, can you just have them notify us if the interest rate goes above well three point seven five, so we can do something else later, whatever, yeah, that's all.
I know, too bad we couldn't lock it in for a couple of years. Great, all those in favor? Okay. Before I forget to eat, could you, or probably Jesse's already on this, but could you get a measurement, roughly what a truck is out front of the building, for, you know, a fire truck, plus what you would need to turn out, just so we have that, I just, before I forget, I don't forget in ten minutes.
All right.
Um, next, we have the public works garage fire alarm system.
So, um, this is on the agenda, um, there's been a couple over the last two years, um, I've learned of a couple different public works garages around the state, um, getting stored by fire, um, usually after a snow event early in the morning, um, this, this winter, there was one in, uh, I believe it was Peru. And a couple of years prior, there was, uh, in the town of Union, um, and the manager for Union did a presentation on it at the manager's summit that I went to, the summit before. And, um, most public works garages, um, are in a somewhat remote area where there's not a ton of residential houses nearby, so it's, takes longer to notice if the building's on fire. Um, the building does not have a fire alarm, um, a lot of, um, don't. Um, so, I did look into having an alarm system put in, um, the town, as you know, has invested quite a lot of money in the public works department, um, and I think it's wise to protect that investment with, um, some sort of alarm system, um. The, um, especially in the winter, most of our equipment is stored in the garage, so not only did the town lose the buildings, but all of their plumbing, um, equipment as well. Uh, I did reach out to the, um, company that does this fire alarm in the town office, um, and so there's a quote in your packet, um, from them, as well as a second, um, company of Herman, um, Star Protection, um, and they're quoting it significantly less than, um, Minuteman. Both are for a heat alarm, um, since the fumes of, you know, the trucks would set off the swamp alarms, um, so it's for a heat alarm system for that type of building. Um, they are equipped with, um, outside of, um, strobes and horns, um, on the outside of the building, um, which is different than this building. And the yearly monitoring, um, is seven ninety-five at Minuteman and it's four fifty-three, um, at North Star. As far as, um, paying for the system, if it's something that you want to entertain, um, it was not obviously, um, budgeted for, um, however, we do have sixty thousand dollars in the F Y twenty-two public works building line, and, um, that was set aside for the cold storage addition that has proved to be coming in significantly higher than the sixty.
Yeah.
Um, so that's been on hold and potentially need to look at doing something else up there, um, so you could, um, choose to use some of those funds at this time if you wish to proceed inside of that structure.
Do they have eight detectors? They can tell you where they're going? Is that enough, or that whole building must be, I mean, they know where they're going? Those thermal pro- thermal probes work pretty good in the high ceilings and stuff? Open space?
They're less nuisance than if they're any sort of reflective or smoke protect, they're definitely, they're, they're, the Rogers are catching.
Yeah.
Doesn't take long to burn that out when something's started, so.
Right, it is, those little probes like this, right, yeah.
If you look here at the second page, I was just trying to look at the differences between the two, um, why the quote is so much different, but it looks like there's seven detectors in the second one, I think there's eight in the first one.
Well, there's one below it, the seven, and then there's one just different type.
Yep, gotcha.
You know the other thing I can think of, so you're gonna do it, one-up door alarms? I mean, it's not like places that haven't been broken into around here.
Um, it's a separate, um, it's a separate quote, cause, um, as I said in the memo, um, you're probably gonna have an agenda item.
I have a good chance to re-collge, I just, it's cool.
This building, um, and there's a, um, we're looking at what a door alarm system would be for this building, so, um, cause it's not currently equipped with that, so we could look into that at the same time.
And would this be, like, would you get a notification on your phone? Is it set up that way, so that if there's?
It's set up to go directly to the dispatch.
Directly to, like, some, yeah, yep.
Yep.
Right. And that's part of the monitoring fee that you paid here?
Yep, yep.
No, I don't think, I don't think it's a bad idea, I think it looks good, and especially, I mean.
It's a good idea. Yeah.
With everything that we have in there now, it's growing all the time, so, and you know what, the cost of all the, and the, the wait time, that's the biggest thing, is not just about purchasing, yeah, waiting for your insurance, but it's about the wait time, leave time to be a year.
Yeah, otherwise, we just have the insurance problem.
Yeah.
We need those trucks.
Uh, I make a motion to award the publics, public works garage fire alarm system project to North Star Protections LLC in the amount of seventy-one hundred and fifty dollars, and to encumber that amount from the fiscal year twenty-two public works building budget line.
Second. Then moved in second in to award the public works, um, garage fire alarm system project to North Star Protections LLC in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and to encumber that amount from the F Y twenty-two public works building budget line. Any discussion? All those in favor? Are we gonna put that out a bit again, Jesse, or just wait until, you know, the public works building add-on?
Oh, yeah, we'll probably just wait, I have one thing, different direction, but.
Okay, check.
Yep. Probably bring that to you.
Okay. All right, next, we have the Tremont Fire Department, um, radio system. I know Keith is not here, but maybe Keith could help explain it to us. This is the, the console that, um, or the radio, sorry, that, um, Keith had explained before that he wanted to try to swap out to, and the, yeah, do you have any?
Yes, so the, um, Tremont's radio and antenna system is, uh, over in Southwest, um, up on the Freeman Ridge. Um, Southwest Harbor Police Dispatch is upgrading their whole console unit and their radios and antennas, um, it's supposed to, I just talked to the police chief today, it's supposed to arrive tomorrow, um, they were with it a month or two ago. So, they're upgrading all of theirs, um, theirs, and you can add, I get it wrong, but theirs, part of their systems failed a couple of months ago, Tremont's did not, um, so Tremont's is still working, um, they needed to upgrade their whole system. To my understanding, there was an issue a week and a half or so ago with Tremont's existing, um, radio, um, that was repaired, um, but the fire chief has gotten quotes for, um, replacement of that, um, do you know, after I talked to the chief today, is this a new radio band repeater?
Yep, only, what we have there now is just a little radio and a big box.
Okay.
And that would be a real radio repeater.
How much higher voltage does that want to?
Um, so, when I spoke to the police chief today, he did say that he was, you know, in full support of the fire department wanting to do this, um, he felt that it would bring everybody into the right time period. And he didn't really see any reason why, um, this proposal is from a different company than Southwest Harbor is using, but he said that he didn't see any reason why it shouldn't communicate with the new, um, console they're getting installed, um, uh, all the new radios should be fine, it's just the old ones.
So everything will play nice together?
Yep, um, so, he was gonna get back to me, um, the company bringing the console, um, sounded like they were bringing something to try and communicate with Tremont's old radio, um, so, if that's not needed, um, he was just gonna know whether or not there's stuff on there. But, in the general, we thought it was a great idea, um, for everybody calling for it.
And that's the police chief, not the fire chief?
The police chief, yep.
We checked with the fire chief?
I have not yet. Um.
Did you have something to eat?
Yeah, I just, that, that console that they've had issued, whether it's like forty years old, they acknowledge it's still outdated.
Yeah. Yep.
And now that they're updating that, we can get rid of our three hundred dollar a month phone line.
Mm-hmm.
And just in two years, it will pay for this new system, and by having this remote, if something catastrophic happened to the Southwest Harbor Dispatch Center, we could all, we could still run our tones off of our base station, or Mount Desert can pick up and tell us and control us, so.
Really?
This whole new technology, and, I mean, for the eight thousand, I think it is, we'll get rid of that hardwired line that sets out our tones, it'll all be down to the old thing, and it's, uh, something we should have done years ago, but now they're finally getting rid of that old system and updating it. And we're using Browns because they're local and they'll come down instantly, that's a, and then, then, get them for years for us, so.
Yep.
Yep.
I don't blame anyone, that's the way to, if you can use someone local like that, that's the way to go.
Technically, that bought not, they're adding hardware to this new system to dumb it down hardware-wise, to, so that our old system will still work, but, so we just need to eliminate that, what thirty, fifteen bucks a year in the phone line.
Yeah.
Put it into some decent equipment, and, and, uh, it'll pay itself back quickly.
Yep.
Um, the police chief in Southwest did, um, think that it was a reasonable price that Browns gave, um, the fire department, um, sounded like less than what they had replaced that for.
What company did they use, do you know?
Uh, no, I didn't write it down, um, and the, um, battery backup, um, Keith said was an optional addition, um, and he had that quoted due to, um, back earlier, I think in January, the town's South Star's generator went down, um, which lost all radio communication to the old tower. So this battery backup would prevent that for Tremont's radio, um, and the police chief, they also agreed that from their wise purchase. As far as, um, paying for it, um, the, uh, Keith was thinking about amending his, uh, F Y twenty-four budget request, um, but we did discuss the fire equipment reserve accounts that the town has, which is for, um, replacement of apparatus or equipment, uh, generally exceeding five thousand dollars, um, so, we both are in agreement that you could use those funds, um. If you did amend the budget, they'd have to wait until July first to do that, um, versus using the reserve would be the only, um.
I think it's a great time to do it, Southwest is doing it, and while you're doing it, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't wanna do the battery backup, just because, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'm just curious, how long, you think the battery backup would run it?
Brown said that with heavy use, it should be twenty-four hours to run our repeater and system, I think it was plenty of time to get, and it, and it generated a lot of.
Okay. That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that price is, I mean, nowadays for anything like that.
Yes, also will increase the wattage and the battery in, uh, that will cover Tremont and Downer Islands better for that, for the day upgrade, and will go from like twenty-five watts to near sixty watts, so, um, our handhelds and portables, um, that dispatch should be able to hear more clearly.
Let me just get a total on the, you want an exact number, Jesse, for?
Yeah.
And this is enough to cover it? It'd be seventy-seven thirty-three.
Yeah. There's twenty-five thousand in there, is it?
Yeah, I just meant, there's no, like, we're not forgetting any, as far as Browns are hooking it up, or, like, we're.
Not, not aware of.
Okay.
We do have like twelve hundred in our radio and communication budget, if it's simple stuff, but.
Okay, yeah.
This is a big expense out of our budget to try to control all alarms, and it's still down quite a lot, so it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see any issue using the, uh, fire equipment reserve, do you guys, that's what it's for?
Nope.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
Yeah.
What's the number?
Seventy-seven thirty-three.
Yep.
Uh, I make a motion to authorize the, what is it, town accountant is what it's maybe?
Authorize, Jesse, I would just say, town manager to.
All right, I, motion. Alright, I motion to authorize the town manager to use seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars out of the fire equipment reserve for new radio communications equipment.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to ask the town manager to remove seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars from the fire equipment reserve for new communications devices for the fire department. Sound good? All those in favor? Next, we have the FY twenty-four budget. Yeah, and I just wanna say, poor Jesse. Have you seen how much the budget is? The increase for Jesse's part of it?
Jesse's done good work!
No, Andrea, that wasn't like, that wasn't a throw to the back.
Chandler's dodged it back there.
Good job, Jesse.
Alright, so, in addition to your budget binder, in your packet, there's also the outline that we usually prepare for changes of more than five thousand dollars compared to last year's budget. I did mention in your, in the demo, that, as you know, the school budget isn't finalized yet. They'll be here next Monday to present that to you again. So, I have left out a few of the typical budget message pages that goes in the intro that kind of recaps the budget with one of the tax rates, since a good portion of it goes over the school numbers. So, I'll type that up for the next meeting once we have those numbers. But if you look at the budget summary in the binder, on page intro nine, that's the municipal budget. And you can see on the page eleven that the property taxes needed for municipal budget is a zero percent increase as Jayden mentioned over the last year. That currently is using fifty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven of the surplus funds. The last several years, you used some amount, usually around a hundred and fifty thousand surplus to offset the tax rate event. Due to the excess surplus funds, we're still hovering just above a million dollars in surplus. The state recommends around seven hundred thousand in surplus, so we're well above that. So, this current budget proposes the use of fifty-five thousand six twenty-seven to bring that increase down to zero. If you chose not to use any surplus, then that would be the increase to the municipal budget for property taxes, fifty-five thousand over the last year. The, going over, changes over five thousand. Motor vehicle excise tax is projected to be up to twenty-three thousand, but based on current year's, year-to-date receipts. Homestead reimbursement is expected to increase slightly ninety-five thousand five hundred. You'll see the reduction of the unallocated fund balance compared to previous years. You'll see the transfer in from revenue sharing reserve is down ten thousand. That's based on year-to-date receipts and average over the last three years. The municipal revenue sharing has been increasing, but the way that we currently handle the reserve, maintaining three years' worth as the balance, that means even though we're getting more, the reserve needs to be higher to cover three years' worth, so that's the reason for the slight reduction to the run rate. Under expenses, changes over five thousand, I mean, we do have the CEO wages line. We are proposing the addition of the full-time deputy code enforcement officer to be shared with Southwest Harbor. The thought behind that is where both towns currently utilize the same code enforcement officer, who will not be renewing his certification in twenty twenty-five, that we should work together to obtain a replacement code enforcement officer. The idea is that we could do a deputy now so that they can train with John in both towns until his departure. Code officers are, as you're probably aware, hard to find, and they do, they do require training before they can jump in. They can start the CEO job itself and obtain certification within twelve months. However, they can't do funding inspection until they're certified. The Southwest Harbor Select Board has approved this expense in their budget for FY twenty-four to present to voters. You will see in the budget of revenue line from Southwest Harbor to compensate for their fifty percent share of that expense. Health insurance is increased based on the full-time CEO position as well as the full-time public works position that was added this past year. Currently, in the current budget, that was funded with the transfer of cemetery mowing contract funds and additionally some ARCA funds. So, that line in FY twenty-four will be up over this year's because it's in the full budget for the wages and the health insurance. Under contract for police, you'll see there there's a reduction of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. The last two years, I believe it is, that we have been in a contract for forty-five hours a week and we have budgeted for forty-five hours a week. We've consistently averaged thirty-two hours a week, which has left us just north of a hundred thousand dollars in surplus over those two years. So, I would propose, instead of overbudgeting again and adding to the surplus that we just budgeted for the thirty-two that we're receiving, and if by chance we end up at forty-five, then we can encumber the difference from the left over. Dix Point Road is a reduction as the project is being paid out of the reserve and is, for the most part, finished. Some work this spring. Planning Board is also a reduction due to the contract work with the Complan winding down this fall. In the harbor management and wharf management fund, there's an increase of seventy-eight fifty-five in each. The harbor master's salary previously in our existing budget was split between, into thirds, between harbor and wharf and public works. We decided moving forward with hiring a new harbor master to try and remove the public works responsibilities from that to attract a candidate. So, the salary is now split into two between the harbor and wharf, so that's the increase there. The manager's salary is increased due to the increased wages the select board set beginning July first of twenty-three. Town clerk wages increased due to the cost of living of eight point seven percent. All the town office employees in the budget received the eight point seven cost of living. The clerks just pumps above that, five thousand, that's why it shows up here. Under software, I have budgeted the seven thousand dollars for the mapping program that we previously discussed for the website to integrate the tax maps into that new software on the website. Health reimbursement account is increased due to employees, employees. Retirement is the same. Heating fuel is a deduct, a decrease of ninety-four fifty-five based on the FY twenty-three actuals of cost of fuel going down. Southwest Harbor Tremont ambulance is an increase of eight thousand, that's their request this year with a pension on it for. The public works foreman is an increase over the budget due to, over the last year due to a step raise that was received in FY twenty-three and the FY twenty-four increase of two percent. Public works drivers, that's the additional wage and the annual raises. Harbor masters wages are down due to hiring a new harbor master. We're projecting the wage to be lower than the outgoing harbor master slightly. Winter fuel and summer fuel is the same as the heating fuel based on FY twenty-three actuals. And road solids is an increase of ten thousand four sixty-seven based on this year's actuals and the cost of salt on the scabbard.
Jess?
Yes.
Harbor masters wages, would it make sense to budget exactly what was there before in case you were to spend extra money to help keep Justin for a little bit, to help train and such? Or do you feel confident that it will still come in under? I'm just thinking that, wouldn't it be better to overbudget the under with that?
I think it will be fine because I predict mostly this training will be this spring.
Okay, yes, that's right.
So, I don't anticipate there would be a whole lot of expense for next budget. On the subject of harbor, in the harbor fund, in the harbor section, under revenues, line seventy-five morgue fees, the harbor committee, I proposed at the last harbor committee meeting and they reviewed the proposed budget, that they considered increasing the morgue fees from sixty dollars currently to eighty dollars without the increase after expenses it left of a surplus of two hundred dollars for the year. So.
What was North East Harbor, like a hundred and thirty? A hundred and twenty?
So, the harbor committee did make a motion to recommend to the select board increasing them from sixty to a hundred. So, you'll see that reflected in the revenues. It adds approximately twelve thousand dollars to the revenues for harbor.
Are you ready for questions now, Jesse, or you just?
Yep, no, I'm here. I'm just looking if there's anything else I wanted to point out for the moment.
You said there was a little over a million in the extras, extra funds?
Yep, it's on the last page of the general fund.
Okay, I was trying to find it in the general fund this way. Do you usually use a hundred and fifty on average for that, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the last couple of years.
How much did we encumber this year with that?
Fifty-five.
The, as far as how much is left over from FY twenty-two?
Yes, yeah.
The audit has not been completed yet, so.
Okay. That's right. I know we're in good shape with it, so I don't mind spending that fifty-five. I know we exceeded it last year in good shape. It was the first time we really exceeded it.
Yeah, sounds good there.
Um, there is. I've added under, I mean, revenues, under local sources, the bank CD interest on the surplus funds, the twelve thousand. So, that's a new revenue line this year, and I will update the budget tomorrow to change the revenue from the cemetery, from seventeen to seven, so that will change. So, the fifty-five will be down.
Looks really good.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, good job. I think we're gonna, normally I would say not to, you know, spend that fifty-five, not to pull it out of there just to keep our fund solid, but I think this year we're gonna need it with all the stuff with the school and everything else. I think that if you comment it, that then it will help alleviate the pain a little bit.
I like it.
Do you think any more that should be put towards the school?
I wouldn't do any less than a zero to, you know. And that's, and it keeps it solid as long as we keep, we worked a long time to get that fund balance up. It was very, very low. When I first was on the board, a while, a few years now, but it was, it was low, low, like.
Before you get on?
Yeah, it was, it was like under two hundred, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was like a hundred, and now it's over a million, so that's good to get it. Once you hit there, yeah, it's, you just don't wanna knock it down too much.
No, absolutely.
Keep it, keep it right about there, and then if we keep having extra, then yes, and then you can spend it and.
And unfortunately, just due to the size of the school budget in general, not to mention the increase, but just the size of the budget, it's gonna take a significant number to take a change, to make a change in the tax bill. Even the fifty-five thousand, which seems like a small amount compared to all the expenses, still comes out at four point nine percent of ours, so.
I don't think there's anyone in here, Jesse, that's gonna complain because you've got a zero percent increase. Alright, is there anything anyone would like to have for changes in there, or?
That's the goal.
No, this looks great. Good job, Jesse.
Yeah.
Alright, we're all set with the budget, everybody's good with that? Next is the town manager's report. Putting you right on the spot, Jesse.
So, in the last couple weeks, I finished the FY twenty-four budget work, checked the bank CD rates, compared to road notice, notices. Meeting prep tonight, our electronic, new electronic sign was installed.
Yep, there you go, so you can post anything on the.
So, after this budget meeting, my agenda for this week is to get to work on updating the sign.
It looks great.
And office staff was busy with lean discharges, BMP reports, working on the annual report and preparing the budget binders. Public Works was kept busy with snow plowing, treating roads, receiving salt deliveries, vehicle and equipment maintenance, and posting the roads. The harbor master was in to shovel floats, worked on sheathing replacement. The harbor master, um, was in to shovel floats, um, worked on sheathing replacement, mooring assignments, and dock cleanup. And over the next few weeks, I will be continuing FY twenty-four budget adjustments and harbor master replacement.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna say, we shouldn't maybe do one of these every week if we're gonna have a meeting every week. Um, also, the salt, did they get caught up with that, I forgot to mention that to you earlier, 'cause they were in a little bit of a pickle when you were gone, so they were trying to sort it all out.
Yep, they did receive what they were missing.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
All right, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five P M. at the town office.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, five P M. at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? For sure, Jared?
Second.
All those in favor?